You're all set, go ahead.
All right, thank you so much. Good evening and welcome to the September 12th, 2022, meeting of the Town of Barnstable Planning Board. My name is Steve Robichaud. The Planning Board's public hearing will be held tonight at 7:00 PM by remote participation methods. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. The meeting is televised via Channel 18 and may be viewed through the Channel 18 website Real-time access to the Planning Board meeting is available utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID provided below. Public comment can be addressed to the Planning Board by utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID provided below. The phone number to dial in is 888-475-4499, and the meeting ID tonight, 869-9384-1814. Applicants, the representatives, and individuals required or entitled to appear before the Planning Board may appear remotely and may participate through the link or telephone number provided above. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations should be submitted in advance of the meeting so that they may be displayed for remote public access viewing. Application materials may be accessed by contacting Karen Herrent or calling 508-862-4064. And at this time, we will introduce our board members and staff members, starting with Bob.
Good evening, Bob Twos.
And Mary.
Good evening, Mary Barry.
And Tim.
Good evening, Tim O'Neill.
And Ray.
Good evening, Ray Sexton here.
And my name is Steve Robichaud. And staff, if we could introduce ourselves, Jim.
Good evening, Jim Cutford, Senior Planner, Planning and Development.
And Kate.
Good evening, Kate Maltinato, Assistant Director of Planning and Development.
And Karen.
Good evening, Karen Herren, Administrative Staff, Planning and Development.
Great, thank you so much. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on Channel 18 in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20. I will now inquire whether anyone else is taping this meeting, and if so, please make your presence known. Seeing none, we will continue to the public comment portion. This is for public comment unrelated to any agenda item here this evening. And Sarah, do we have anyone for that general public comment at this time?
I don't believe that we do, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Which leads us to our first agenda item this evening, which is an A and R. Tim, if you could take that.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an approval not required plan for Wilkins Lane Properties LLC, care of New England Development. We have submitted a request for an approval not required plan entitled, "Approval Not Required Plan - 35 Wilkins Lane, Assessors Map 296, Lot 39, Hyannis, Massachusetts, Prepared For Wilkins Lane Properties LLC - 75 Park Plaza, Boston, Massachusetts, 02116, Telephone 617-243-7843, dated August 16th, 2022."
Great, thank you very much, Tim. And, um, let's see, this is not a public hearing. And we'll now go to the applicant to provide an overview of the plan proposed. Attorney Ford, is that you?
It is, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. Mike Ford, representing the applicant and owner of the property, Wilkins Lane Properties LLC. They're an affiliate of New England Development. Mr. Chairman, what's before you is a plan to reconfigure two lots that currently exist on Wilkins Lane, Lots 2 and 3. Lot 2 currently is about 25 acres and Lot 3 is 3 acres. The proposal is to create new lots 2 and 3. Lot 2 will have frontage along Wilkins Lane. Wilkins Lane, and some of the board members are already aware, is a road duly laid out under the subdivision control law by the Town of Barnstable and fully constructed. And the other lot, Lot 3, will take its frontage from both Wilkins Lane and Kids Hill Road. The property has been the subject recently of a Cape Cod Commission review and has received an approval under a development agreement. And this reconfiguration of the lots was approved also under the development agreement and is anticipated. Lot 3, just for informational purposes, will be the site of the recently approved Hanover residences that has been approved again by the Cape Cod Commission. So, this proposal meets the provision under the subdivision control law, Chapter 41, Section 81 L and P, in that it is a division of attractive land into two lots, both of which contain the necessary frontage along a road which has been previously laid out under the subdivision control law. The only thing I would bring to the board's attention, Mr. Chairman, is that since filing, we have filed a new plan which only has two changes on it. You might have noticed, if you looked at the plan we filed, the hatched area running along the boundary of the two lots to the north is subject to a grading and construction easement. The plan we filed said that that easement was going to be recorded herewith, in other words, when this plan was recorded. The easement has subsequently been recorded, and so we now have the recording information. So all we did was to change the Mylar to include the recording information of that easement now. And the plan now bears the date of September 6th, because that's when the modification was done to add that title reference. So any motion the Planning Board makes on this, Mr. Chairman, should refer to the plan with the same title but with a date of September 6th, 2022. Brandon Carr is on from DePret Engineering, and representatives of New England Development are also on. If there are any questions from board members, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent, thank you, Attorney Ford, I appreciate that overview. And just to summarize and be clear, any motion on this item should be read from the agenda using the September 6th, 2022 date rather than the August 16th, 2022 date. So thank you for that clarification. And go ahead now and look to comments from board members. Bob, comments, questions?
I'm good, thanks.
Bob and Mary?
I'm also fine, thank you.
Great, thank you, and Tim?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you, Tim, and Ray?
Just one question, this is the site that previously was going to be developed for a medical facility, if my memory serves correctly. Now we're changing it to a residence, correct?
It was previously zoned as part of the medical services overlay, Ray, you're correct. The town then created a special subzone over this particular area which authorizes the residences that are now being proposed and will be constructed.
Thanks, Mike. Nothing else, Mr. Chair?
Great, thank you, Ray, and Attorney Ford, thank you. And at this time, we would seek a motion on this item.
I would like to make a motion to endorse the plan entitled, "Approval Not Required Plan, 35 Wilkins Lane, Prepared For Wilkins Lane Properties LLC, Drawn By DePret Engineering, Dated September 6th, 2022, As An Approval Not Required Plan."
Thank you, Tim, do we have a second?
This is Mary, I'll second that.
Great, thank you, Mary, and all those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye, and the motion passes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Attorney Ford. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, which is a special permit. And Bob, if you don't mind, taking this one.
Thank you, I'd be pleased. This is a special permit number 2022-003. Mr. Ronald Boujois, owner, Our Child LLC, 233 to 239 Barnstable Road, Hyannis, Mass, 02601. The applicant proposes a change of use. As a result, the applicant has requested relief from Section 240-24.1.11A4A in accordance with Section 240-56 for parking reduction by providing 51 parking spaces where 78 are required. The site is located in Assessors Map 310, parcel 170, Zoned Hyannis Gateway and Wellhead Protection Overway District. The subject property is within the Hyannis Village zoning district. This is a new hearing, it is a public hearing. And if it's convenient, Mr. Chair, I'd move to open the public hearing.
Excellent, it is, thank you, Bob, and a second on that motion?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
There you go.
All right, we'll give it to Ray, thank you, Ray, and all those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
And Mary?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye, the public hearing is open. And at this time, it appears we have the applicant on, welcome, and please take it away.
Well, thank you. So this is a building where, it's a big building, there's a first floor and a second floor. And at one point, it was an old furniture store. And then someone bought it and it got broken up into different pieces. So now carpets of Cape Cod occupies a good portion of it. And they have a portion where they have customers, look at their carpets, and they sell them, and they have their employees. But the majority of their space is used to house their carpets and to cut it and that type of thing. It's more of a place where, you know, they do have a showroom, they have employees, and they have a few retail customers. But it's not like a real busy retail business. I've actually purchased carpets from them prior to my ownership of this building. So they have a limited amount of what they really need. And it's always, I've never seen any overcrowding of pockets, so that's one occupant. The second occupant on that first floor was previously occupied by Aaron's, and they had been there probably for 15 years or so. They recently, coincidentally, just moved out. Their business plan has changed. And they rented, it's like a rented center type business is what they did. Once they moved out, this potty express approached me to take their prop, their space. And they predominantly rent by tents, chairs, tables, potty products, and they housed a lot of their potty products in that unit as well. It's kind of a warehouse scenario. And they do have a showroom where they show their wares. They've got like cups and teas and themes for birthday parties and weddings and that type of thing. So they really just have a few employees, they have like two or three employees, and then they store their stuff and, you know, they might have a retail customer or two, so they're really not using a lot of space as well. Then there's GG's Beauty, which is what kind of triggered this all. And they're in a unit that was formerly an accountant's unit. And, you know, when they were going for their permits, you know, they had to accommodate the pocket, and this kind of triggered the whole situation. We don't know really how many units, how many spaces they're going to use, but they're probably going to need a good 10 to 15 spaces, at least 10 anyways, between their employees. And they're going to probably have a consistent, especially on Saturdays, I would imagine they'll have a consistent turnover of clients that are going to come and go. And then on the second floor, there's a restaurant accounting solutions company. And they really, they do accounting specifically for restaurants. And they probably have 10 employees. And then they have, like I saw Ted Zambellus there the other day. I saw Joe Jamiel, the two, you know, restaurant, popular restaurant owners. And so they have, their restaurants come and go, and, you know, so they have some clients. So that's who occupies the building. We had a proposal where we had like 42 or 43 spaces with what's there. I happen to, just one of the buildings is in my name and the other one's in an LLC that I'm the principal behind. I'm not sure which is which, I'm sorry. But I have a half acre lot right next to it at 139 Grove Street, where I could very well, and you can make it a condition of, if you guys are in agreement, the board seems to be in agreement with my proposal, I would make it a condition where we could put an easement for nine or 10 spaces. And I think it's in your packet where you would see that proposal. And we would make that official, and that would be in perpetuity with the property going forward. So that's kind of what I'm hoping to do. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I hope that gives you a good little overview of what we're trying to do and what's existing there now. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, sir, appreciate that overview. And I'll go ahead and kick it off myself. Just to clarify, you mentioned that currently you're able to offer 42 spaces, is that correct?
I could, I gotta look the exact, I'm gonna look at the exact number. I'm sorry, currently, yes, it is, it's 43 actually, sir.
Forty-three. And so with the nine additional, that would bring it to?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, okay, understood. Now, you know, listening to your presentation and, you know, preparing for this meeting, reading through the notes, it seems that it's your estimation that even with peak demand at each tenant, you would potentially see a maximum of 45 parking spaces being needed. Is that correct?
That's correct, and that's being aggressive, but you never know what, you know, what happens down the line if business uses change. But right now, the current businesses that are there, really, they don't really use a lot of spaces.
Understood, understood, I, you know, driven by the building many times, I stopped by there recently just to get a look at it before this meeting. And, you know, in my opinion, and I'd love to see what the rest of the board thinks about this, but in my opinion, for simplicity purposes, I would seek to see if possibly the board would be interested in offering the special permit for the 43 spaces rather than the 52, for a couple reasons. One of the reasons is, you know, I'd really love to see that Grove Street site not clear cut, you know, to make room for more spaces, to leave those native trees in place. And for, you know, simplicity purpose, I think, based on what's there and what I've seen for how many spaces are typically filled, to me, 43 seems sufficient when a maximum peak is estimated at 45. So that's my thought, and would love to see what other board members think. And go around, Bob, questions, comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that, Mr., am I pronouncing your name right, by the way? Is it Mr. Boujois?
You got it, sir, good job.
So if we go with 43, you think that, you know, for all intensive purposes, that's going to be adequate?
I do, sir, yes.
Okay. So then my follow-up question then is, when we propose these special conditions, which are listed on page 3 of the staff report, should I amend Paragraph 4 to put in a specific number? You mentioned nine spaces for the easement on 139 Grove. Now it doesn't specify any number of spaces.
I guess you would cross that out, sir, right? If we were going to go with just the 43?
Well, I guess that's a follow-up question. Right now, it's proposed a special condition for an easement at 139 Grove for parking, but it didn't specify what number of spaces.
Oh, it's nine, yes, it is.
Yeah, so should I put nine in there?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. Well, unless it changes, that's what I'll read at the appropriate time. Okay, good, thank you.
Mary, thoughts?
I just have a question, if we go with that, I like the idea, Steve, what you had said, there's no reason to clear cut property if we don't need to. But is the building commissioner going to approve that as with the, what would it, without the nine additional? I guess that would be my question for you, Jim, or Kate. I'm not sure if that's a requirement by the building commissioner when they reviewed it?
Right, so that's how Mr. Boujois came, is before the Planning Board, he has gone through site plan review. The building commissioner did state that in fact, he was short parking in terms of the uses and the new use that he mentioned. And in order to move forward, he would need to seek a reduction in parking. So the request here tonight is actually for, I think it's 51 or parking spaces, which is already a reduction from the 78 that are required. You know, it is certainly the discretion of this board if there is reason to reduce it further or to, as the chairman mentioned, you know, leave it as existing due to the current uses and limiting impacts in the neighborhood. You certainly are well within your rights, and that permit would then be handed to the building commissioner to demonstrate that he has met his parking requirements for these uses.
And I guess my last question, thanks for the clarification on that. My last question would be, because I think we have it in the findings, that this reduction is for the businesses as cited. Is that correct? Business uses as cited in this application?
Right, so yes, the findings would likely need to be modified slightly, and I could take a look at that while you guys are discussing, if you like.
Okay.
Yeah, I took a peek at the findings, it seems to me that we edit number 2 from 51 to 43, and we'd strike number 3, and we'd strike number 8A. Just in this initial glance. And then if that seems like the right thing to do, then we just have to look at the conditions and what adjustments to make there.
So I'm in favor of your recommendation, Steve, as long as it adheres to what the applicant is applying for now. I mean, if obviously the businesses change, we need to revisit it.
That's a great point, yeah, yeah, we could add that in. And Tim, questions, thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I fully agree with trying to make a plan work with the property and the parking provided as is. And having to not interrupt another lot next door and clear cut it, you know, where it could be used for something else or can remain green space, I think makes a lot of sense. And I also agree with Mary, just that, you know, if any of the existing businesses change type from retail or office or anything else, I think it would be appropriate that this board takes another look at it. So just making sure we cover that going forward, but no, other than that, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Great, and Ray? Thank you, Tim, Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A quick question is, how big is the lot on Grove? And the reason I'm asking is, if I, Mr. Chairman, I support your idea too. I think 43 would fit the bill, I visited the site today. I'm just wondering if the 139 Grove, or it looks like it's an extension that can be accessed on Mulberry. But at any rate, if we don't require the additional parking, can we perhaps get some kind of agreement that it'll be left as a green space? Or is it big enough to be developed for something else?
Yeah, and I guess before you answer, I'll mention two things. I, hopefully I didn't misspeak, only a portion of that property would have to be cleared for parking, not the whole property, so just want to clarify that. Mr. Boujois, could you speak to, you know, that site and what possibly the future use might be?
Certainly, that site is a half acre site, sir. And where we proposed the easement, it would go over, it's, the dimensions are something like 70 by, I'm just looking at them right now, 100, it's approximately 70 by 80, 80. It's about 70 by 230 feet. So we're, and that's, so it's 70 depth, you know, and it's 230 feet on Grove Street. And if in fact we gave the easement, it would only really affect like 24 feet of it. So that would still leave, and you know, with the Septax and the way you need to, I guess, drive the cars in. Because a lot of the, some of the pocket would still be on Mulberry. So it would still leave basically 200 feet of the lot available for another potential use.
That makes sense, I wasn't, I couldn't get a grip, a real good handle on just how big, so, you know, that's a piece of property. And the thing is, you would be, if you're not required to have an easement and have parking on there, then you'd have a whole lot to develop for something.
Right, minus those 24 or 30 feet, whatever it is.
Right, well, unless we say you don't need to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's all for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, appreciate it, Ray, thank you. You know, it seems like we have some consensus on this. Jim, just to kind of run through this with you real quick, it seems like we move forward with this motion with the findings, we edit number 2 from 51 spaces down to 43?
Mr. Chairman, I have 42 as existing conditions.
Oh, okay, all right. Mr. Boujois, we have 42 in our official packet as the number of official spaces, so we would need to use that figure as the amount that we would be allowing under the special permit.
That is correct.
Okay, all right, so Jim, just continuing on, so again, edit number 2 from 51 spaces to 42, strike number 3, and strike number 8A, and then add an item saying that this board would need to revisit if any use changes.
Thank you.
May I recommend revisit if any use changes that would increase parking requirements?
I like it, yeah.
Yeah. That would work.
And that would be a condition, just to note, that we can incorporate that into a condition.
Good catch, Jim.
And then it seems to me, seems to me, under the conditions, we would simply change number 3 from 51 to 42 and strike number 4.
Mr. Chair?
Is that you, Bob?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the draft findings.
Yes.
Finding number 2 on page 2 of the staff report, when we modify the 51 to 42, your suggestion was we then strike Paragraph 3 and Paragraph 8A. But once we modify Paragraph 2, and we make a special condition about the easement for the nine additional places on 139 Grove, does that leaves Paragraph 3 of findings and Paragraph 8A of findings still relevant and appropriate?
Well, I don't believe so, only because we wouldn't need the easement of that property.
I thought we were keeping the easement.
Well, the whole purpose of reducing the number from 51 to 42 was so that we wouldn't need the easement. The easement was going to add nine spaces to bring it from existing conditions, 42, up to the required amount of 51.
All right, so then the proposal is to go with a total of 42 places and no easement to increase it by nine more spots?
Correct, yeah, yeah, and 42 again is existing conditions, so really, it's just to kind of leave it where it is because we feel it's sufficient.
I got that, thanks. What I'm, screwed up when I read it, just correctly.
No, 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 no problem at all. And then again, the conditions, if use changes that would increase parking requirements, that would be a condition, as well as number 3, change 51 to 42, and then we can strike item number 4.
Correct.
Okay? Bob, entertain a motion if you'd like?
Well, I need to file a motion to close the public hearing, I believe, if there's no other members of the public who want to speak.
Yes, sir, let me check with Sarah. Sarah, do you have any members of the public seeking to speak on this item?
Not at this time.
So then I need to close the public hearing, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Bob, and a second?
I'll second that, this is Mary.
All right, thank you, Mary, and all those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. Public hearing is closed, and any additional board questions or comments before we seek a motion? Okay, seek a motion on this item.
Okay, so then, as preliminary to the motion to adopt the proposal, I propose the following draft findings, which are outlined on page two of the staff report dated September ninth, twenty-twenty-two. Draft finding number one, the property location is two thirty-three to two thirty-nine Barnstable Road, Hyannis, Massachusetts. Two thirty-three to two thirty-nine Barnstable Road, Hyannis, is shown on Assessor's Map three-ten, parcel one-seventy, in the Hyannis Gateway District and Wellhead Protection Overway District. Number two, the applicant Ronald Bourgeois and the owner, Our Child LLC, seeks a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash twenty-four point one, point eleven, A four, little a, in accordance with section two forty dash fifty-six for parking reduction by providing forty-two parking spaces where seventy-eight are required. Draft finding number three is stricken. Finding number four, the planning board finds that the issuance of the special permit is consistent with the design and infrastructure plan, and that the development meets the following criteria. A, the development provides for or supports mixed-use development where appropriate. B, the development provides for the minimizing of curb cuts and driveways on Barnstable Road through a shared use for parking purposes with the direct abutting property. Five, the application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance for a grant of a special permit. Section two forty dash twenty-four point one, point eleven, A four, little a, four, allows the planning board to reduce onsite parking requirements by special permit. Six, after an evaluation of all the evidence presented, the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. Seven, a site plan has been reviewed and approved by the Site Plan Review Committee. The conditions of informal and formal site plan review shall be incorporated by references as conditions to this special permit. Eight, lesser off-street parking is shown to be adequate given special circumstances, including subparagraph A is deleted, subparagraph B, characteristics of use invalidating normal methods of calculating parking demand. Nine, the proposed repairs, alterations, and/or expansion are not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. Mister Jim, I propose that we adopt those findings that I just read into the record.
Excellent, thank you very much, Bob. And do we have a second on this?
This is Mary, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mary. And all those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. And the motion passes. And do we have a motion on the conditions?
Yeah, well, yes, I have a motion to approve with conditions special permit twenty-twenty-two dash zero-three for three, for two-three-three through two-three-nine Barnstable Road, subject to the findings just voted and subject to the special conditions set forth on pages two and three of the staff report dated September ninth. As amended as follows, special condition number three shall read, this special permit modification shall allow for the reduction of parking required. The applicant shall provide no less than forty-two parking places where seventy-eight are required. The change is to strike fifty-one and substitute forty-two. Further, the proposed special condition number four is deleted in its entirety. So the motion to approve is subject to the conditions one through three and five through eight as just modified from the staff report dated September ninth.
And Bob, you want to add a condition for use change that would increase parking?
I'm sorry, the change for?
Uh, we talked about adding a condition for if the use changes that would increase parking, it would come back before this board?
So the special condition number nine is if the use should change, the applicant must come back before the board for further permission.
Excellent.
Give me a minute, I'll write that out.
Got it. Uh, Jim, go ahead.
Two more he has.
Yeah, I, I have it, I have it, Mr. President, thank you. And if I may just recommend, if cha- if the use changes would increase parking requirements at the site. And then, just one more recommendation, of condition number one references the plan itself and perhaps language to the fact of the subject property shall be maintained, and the parking shall be located as shown on the record plans entitled by, by the S D group demonstrating existing conditions or something to that effect. So that we understand the forty-two are the existing conditions, and, and we're not looking at the additional nine.
Yeah, you're saying using the word maintained rather than the word improved, and including the term existing conditions.
Yes, please.
So that's, that's the new special condition nine is read into the record by Jim.
Yeah, got that.
Good.
And then Jim, Jim recommended just a tweak, Bob, to number one, just changing the word improved to the word maintained and mentioning that we are sticking with the existing conditions.
So, uh, special condition one would read, the subject property shall be maintained, and the parking should be located as shown on the record plans entitled Plan of Land, two thirty-five Barnstable Road, dated, should this be September sixth?
No, no, that's fine, that dates.
Again, September, I got two dates in that one, September, then July, in paragraph one.
Oh, yeah, you're right. That looks like a typo. Uh, Jim, should that be, uh, I think that's gonna be July nineteenth. Jim, can you convert that, that first condition? Good catch, Bob.
It is July nineteenth.
July, so that, before the words July nineteenth, we'll strike the word September.
Got it. Thank you, Bob. Excellent, okay. We have the conditions on the record, and we are looking for a second.
This is Mary, I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Mary. And all those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye, and the matter passes.
Great.
Great job, Bob. Okay, moving along. Mister Bourgeois, thank you very much, and thank, thank you for all your good faith efforts and your work on this. Good luck with the, with the property.
Thank you, Mister Robichaud, and everybody else. Thank you so much. Take care. Good night.
Thank you. Um, Kate, do you have an update on the LCP for us?
Thank you, Chair, Kate Maltonato, Assistant Director of Planning and Development. Um, I would like, love to take this opportunity to update on the planning board on the local comprehensive planning committee. At this time, the committee working closely with Barrett Planning Group, who is the LCP consultant, is working on an engagement plan. The objective of the engagement plan is to provide further guidance to the committee as we work towards our next step of going out in the field towards outreach, so the engagement plan will provide guidance for different levels of outreach, whether it's in a table event or a community event as far as handouts and some suggestions for dialogues, as well as tools like an elevator pitch. Pitch, again, this is really to help to lead us towards our next effort in outreach. With the engagement plan, we'll also be working on developing a calendar to list off some events, again, to get out in the field, really looking forward to this next step. So we'll have the engagement plan and the calendar to discuss at the next meeting. And that meeting will be Thursday, September twenty-second, at six P M, in person at the town hall at six P M, in the hearing room. And then, just as a general reminder to planning board members and members of the public, we'd love for everyone to stay up to date. You can stay up to date by visiting the website that we've developed at barnstablelcp.com, and you can also sign up for our newsletters, newsletter from that website. So, right now, really working on that engagement plan, developing some lists of events that'll help us with the outreach, so just teaming up our committee with the tools and some guidance to get out in the field.
Great, Kate, thank you so much. And, I mean, yeah, Jim, Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, if, if I may, real quick, just adding to Kate's with the LCP, we're also working diligently with the Housing Production Plan and the Housing Needs Assessment, which is running somewhat concurrently. And we should be meeting shortly with their team. We have a second consultant, as I think I mentioned previously, who's sifting through all the data right now and working in response to not only the update of the Housing Production Plan, not only the, the understanding of our needs assessment, but really the, the cause that has been brought forward by this board to really understand the metrics and, and we're hopeful that we can have, you know, a pretty robust response here in the near future. I think many of you may have participated in the recent Housing Production Plan focus groups, and a lot of good came out of that, it sounded like. So, nothing, nothing definitive at this time, but we're hopeful, you know, as the process moves along, we're gonna have some really good fact-based plans that can help us produce, you know, housing in, in the near term.
Great, thank you, Jim. And Jim, next week on Wednesday the twenty-first, I have something on my calendar for the Community Housing Forum. Can you talk about what that is?
One second, let me look back at my calendar and see which one that one is, too. Uh, there's a lot, a lot of meetings going on. Let's see, on Wednesday, you said? Uh, yes.
I think so.
I, I believe that's an, an update that the consultant's providing on the Housing Production Plan. It was just, I know they were double-checking the final locations, I was trying to pull up the town's calendar. We can certainly pass around confirmation. I believe it's at the Barnstable Adult Community Center, and this is again an opportunity to provide an update as far as the results from those focus groups. But we'll certainly follow up post this meeting to make sure that that's squared away.
That's great, yeah, that was my intent, was just to say, let's get those details out to the board. I'll be in attendance if anybody wants to meet me over there. I think it would be a good thing to check out. Ray, take it away.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mister Chair. I just, uh, wonder the details of that, because I'd like to attend as well. Sounds like we have a date, but, and maybe a place, but not a time, that I heard.
Yeah, that'd be great to get those details from Kate, and it's a nice big venue, so they can handle plenty of people, so, good to hear.
Thank you.
Any, any other board questions, comments on the LCP or the Housing Production Plan before we move along? Okay, correspondence from D E P Notice one fifty-three, Seaview Ave, Osterville, Nick Williams, Maintain Existing Storm Revetment. Looking for a motion to approve the August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two draft minutes.
This is Mary, I'll make a motion to approve the August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two draft minutes.
Thank you, Mary, and a second?
Uh, this is Tim, I will second.
Thank you, Tim. And all those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
And Mary?
Aye.
And Tim?
Aye.
And Ray?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye, and the minutes are approved. Uh, let's talk about future meetings for a second. It was brought up by multiple members of the public that September twenty-sixth is an important holiday. And with that in mind, we do have two items on the agenda that evening, so we do need to hold our meeting. However, I propose that we continue those two items on the twenty-sixth to the following week, which is October third, at seven P M, simply to respect the holiday, and just want to see if there's any board objections to that adjustment.
That works fine for me.
I think it's fine.
Great, I'm not seeing any objections, so we'll go ahead and do that. I think there's, might be an error on the agenda, it says the, the next meeting would be October tenth. I believe after that new October third meeting, we won't meet until the, um, hold on one sec, until the twenty-fourth. Do I have that right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, good, because I was not gonna be able to make the tenth, so, that's good. Okay, good.
Great, so just to recap, we will convene our meeting on the twenty-sixth, we'll continue the items to the third, and after that, we'll meet on the twenty-fourth, of course, each meeting at seven P M. Prior to adjourned, any questions, comments, discussion? Or a motion to adjourn?
Soon moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mary. All those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. The meeting is adjourned.
Awesome. Everyone, have a good day.